We're gonna go ahead and call our board meeting to order. We're so glad to see everybody here and it's always nice to come to West Jackson Elementary School. So, we're gonna turn it over to y'all for the pledge this time.
Thank you very much. And if my Panther leaders could come up here, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves and say our pledge.
My name is Gibson Lord and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Kayla Phillips and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Joyce DeShivey and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Braylon Grober and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Mary Kate Cleveland and I'm in 4th.
My name's Harlow Bailey and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Emma Patton and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Hope Grizzle and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Claire Walker and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Autumn Linkley and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Sharon Hutchins and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Zora Craig and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Sophie Castleman and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Kaylee Tommy and I'm in 5th grade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for more than...
Oh wait, are we doing that?
It's time to speak for leadership.
Panther leaders are students at West Jackson Elementary who portray the vision of our school by promoting success through leadership, character, and performance. These students serve our school through community outreach, helping with WJES events, and being role models during the school day. Student leaders have the opportunity to attend leadership training through the JW Institute for Leadership Development. At our training, we learn ways to effectively communicate, share what makes WJES so unique, and develop public speaking skills. In addition, Panther leaders serve as mentors, tutors, and guides to students in the morning. We have also participated in many community outreach programs. This includes delivering cookies to our business partners for the holidays and our current project, Pennies for Patients, to raise money for the Leukemia and Nymphomosociety.
We are proud to be Panther leaders!
Thank you very much. We appreciate you folks being such good leaders and sharing with us tonight. I hope everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes from our last meetings. And do I have a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting?
So would.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right. And the agenda?
Yes ma'am, we do have one addition that we'd like to make. And I'm actually gonna ask Dr. Blankenship if she'll speak to an addition to our personnel list. Dr. Blankenship, I'll let you come get this mic so folks can hear it if you don't mind. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to add permission to add one name to our personnel recommendation list. That is Kristen Cotreau, C-O-T-R-E-A-U. She is being recommended as a teacher at Jackson County High School. But most importantly, but as well, she will also serve as the softball coach there at the high school. We could add that name. And then I'd also like to highlight two names that are on the agenda for approval tonight. And that is Ms. Allison Pennington. Has been selected and is being recommended to replace Ms. Jennifer Howley as she's retiring as principal at East Jackson Elementary. So Ms. Pennington was selected by committee to take Ms. Howley's place under approval next year. And then, in turn, we would need to fill Ms. Allison Pennington's assistant principal position. And Ms. Lisa Ellis, who has been serving as instructional coach, has been recommended to take the assistant principal position.
Thank you, Dr. Blankenship. I just want to make mention that, as many may know, the county has experienced some challenges with their electronic system. And we use our background checks through the Jackson County Sheriff's Department. And so Ms. Cotreau has prepared, everything is turned in. We're just waiting on background checks. So that recommendation will be pending background check once they get their system up and running. But we wanted to make sure that for the community, there was an announcement and those folks could get started. So thank you for your willingness to consider that.
All right. Well, with those changes, do I have a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight?
So would.
And a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Uh-huh.
All right. Okay, we'll turn it over for secret team of candidates.
Thanks to all of you who are here this evening. I want to say a very special thank you to the staff members and the students who helped us with tours today. Wow, we got quite a treat. And we've got some outstanding work happening at West Jackson Elementary School. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hardegry and her team because I think she's got some additional highlights that she'll share with us, or the team will anyway.
Thank you very much. And we do have a few other highlights. I hope you enjoyed your showcases you came in tonight. It's always a treat to have you with us. And so we are especially proud to showcase some of the work that we've been doing. This year, our theme is "Dream Big and Aim High." And so we have really challenged our students to do just that. And I hope that that's what you experienced when you walked in, was students sharing excitement about their learning, sharing integrated learning experiences with you through STEAM, through our presentations and our student performances. I hope you enjoyed snippets from our spring musical, 101 Dalmatians Kids, led by Mrs. Stephanie Cleveland, our music teacher, and co-directed by Emily Davis, Katie Lee, and Wendy Henley. We are certainly proud of those students and their work. We also hope you got to see a little bit of our original student artwork, led by Ms. Chalfont, our amazing art teacher. And one of the things we love is the way she asks every student to put an artist statement on their piece so that they can share why it's important to them. So we are really proud of the work that we have going on here. You may have noticed our goats, our mini farms, some farm-to-school things, lots of exciting things to engage our students. And our goal is always to help them see the connections in their learning and how their learning applies to the walls beyond their classroom and to inspire them for their future. So thank you for joining us on our STEAM showcase. As I mentioned, we are continuing to try to build our STEAM culture. Simultaneously, we're really focused on literacy this year as well as student advocacy through our house system. So we're gonna share a little bit about that with you. As well as really personalizing and focusing the learning experiences on just what students need. So we've implemented a school-wide "Winn" program this year, which means "What I Need." And it's allowed us the structure to really provide that targeted-focused instruction, both through acceleration and those experiences that help students target the learning and maximize their growth. So we're excited to share a little bit of that with you. We're also very proud to have received a planning grant through the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, which has allowed us the time to collaborate, to do some professional learning, and to really be intentional about a design to deliver high-quality instruction to our students and to really stretch them. So that's kind of a point of pride for us. And it's really allowed us to do some amazing things with our teachers and our students. So we're proud of that work. And it's also fueled some partnerships, most recently, a partnership with the Alliance Theater in Atlanta. So we are excited that tomorrow, our 3rd grade students are going to be traveling to Atlanta to take in a presentation of The Wizard of Oz. And they're also going to be attending a post-show workshop, which will really delve into some of those behind-the-scenes things. So one of our highlights tonight is actually gonna be in connection with that partnership with the Alliance and some of the professional learning that they brought to our teachers. So we dream big around here. We want to invite you in for just a few minutes so that we can share a few of those things with you. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to do that. So thank you to the board and thank you to all of us for being here. And a special thank you to our teachers and our students for coming back tonight to share your amazing work. So first up, we want to share a little bit about our house structure. So if I could have Emma, Hope, Leo, Cash, Kayla, and Zora.
This summer, the district office challenged each school to find a way to ensure every student has a mentor, guide, and cheerleader throughout the years in Jackson County schools. Through the decision of designing the process, the leadership team has created the idea of houses for WJES. Our school system is... Okay. Our school is divided into six houses.
Each house is represented by a colored Latin name that is a character trait and animal. Within each house, families have been established. Each family is comprised of a faculty member and at least one student from each grade level. The families allow students to connect with someone throughout their elementary period. House gatherings happen monthly where houses work on character traits, community services, and building relationships with fellow house members.
Beginning the first week of school, we have had a house reveal each week, starting with 5th grade. Each student was given a mystery bag that contained one of the six-color house bracelets. Week by week, each grade level welcomed new members to their house families. We have built great relationships and leadership skills throughout houses.
I am Zora. I am the member of the Orange House, also known as FIDUS. FIDUS means "safe and trustworthy." We are the Bears.
I'm Emma. I'm a part of the Blue House. We are Team Tamira. Tamira represents fearless. We're the Lions.
I am Hope. I am a member of the Yellow House. We are Industria. Industria means energy. We're the She-does.
Hi, I'm Leo. My house is the Green House. We are Team Integrity, which means integrity. We are the Eagles.
I am Cash. I'm a part of the Red House. We are Team Quantum. Quantum means respect. We are the Elephants.
I am Kayla and I am a part of the Purple House. We are Team Cura. Cura means responsibility. We are the Horses.
All right. Thank you to our friends for sharing their houses. And now we have Ms. Spooner and Ms. Bull are gonna share a little bit, since you got to see some of our PBL learning, we wanted to let them share a little bit about the planning process behind.
Hello. Okay. So I'm Ms. Bull. This is Ms. Spooner. And we are the 4th grade, part of the 4th grade team. And with the planning process with our PBL, we meet each quarter. With that, we list out the standards that we're wanting to teach that quarter and what we want the students to learn from that. We use the Sign Thinking Process and our Heart Map. And we plan out every standard, what we want the kids to learn, how it can be community-based. And we also tie it in with our Nature Trail. From then, we meet with other teachers, meet with our specials, teachers, and our community members. And we get their input. And from there, we bounce off ideas off each other just to make the PBL even better. We use our PLC time, we use our grade-level planning time, and we also use our grant as well. Every day, we're learning new things and how to improve. But it's wonderful and the kids are enjoying it every quarter.
So for 3rd quarter, we started coming up with our ideas and planning. And I was saying, "I'm doing mythology," and we're writing, of course. And Ms. Bull said she's gonna be doing the constellations and space. And we're trying to figure out how we can mesh all that together. So we decided to have them, after they've learned all the mythology, we have the Star Lab here, so they got to see how the constellations and mythology can work together. And after my kids have learned all the different traditional myths, they got to come up with their own and make it a modernized myths. And they get to create their own constellations that go with that. And then we use the coordinate planes for math. And then we're gonna put on the Nature Trail a solar system station that the kids have helped us figure out the design for that. And we want to have a grid where they can, classes can check out their stories and see how to coordinate, use the coordinates to plot their constellations. And then the kids can actually do that. And then each year, we have a plan for adding new things, the moon phases and that kind of thing. So it's pretty exciting. The kids love it.
And now I would like to invite Ms. Clark and Ms. Nemeczek and their awesome students up to demonstrate one of the new ways we've learned to integrate the arts.
We are partnering with the Alliance Theater in Atlanta. They are coming into our classroom for 10 sessions to teach us about drama in the classroom. We have been practicing tableaus to get ready for them.
A tableau is a statue of an object or animal formed by a person or a group of people at different heights, such as low, medium, and high.
We use tableau in class to help us learn our vocabulary, novel studies, and subjects.
Our scene is from The One and Only Ivan. The One and Only Ivan is a book we're reading about in class. This scene is showing Stella trying to get Ruby out of the truck. Stella and Ruby are elephants. Stella gets hurt. She hurts her foot on the rusty metal of the truck. Mac is mad because Ruby won't cooperate.
Our tableau is about the Westward Expansion and how France gave America some land from Louisiana Purchase. So like France, since Thomas Jefferson, the writer, he's gonna be giving money. And then France is gonna be giving the land. So here it is.
In science class, we have been learning about cells. So our tableau will be about a nucleus in a cell. We will have two people being the cell membrane and then two other people doing a double helix to represent the DNA in a nucleus.
We would like if the board would practice our tableaus with us. Can I stand up? We will be doing a tableau of an angry bear. When I tap the drum once, you will go into your formation. And when I tap the drum twice, you can stop.
Thank you all so much for being here tonight and experiencing that, especially to our board for playing along with that. We are super proud and excited to highlight the wonderful things that we have going on at West Jackson, from chorus, farm-to-school, PBLs, STEAM, student leadership experiences, various clubs, house meetings, community outreach, goats, chickens, and a bunny. And even though I captured all that we have done this year, or parts of what we have done this year in one sentence, is actually a lot of hard work. And for that, we are super proud of what our students have been able to accomplish this year. And we will keep dreaming big for our students, faculty, and school. In addition to what we have highlighted tonight, we've also prioritized literacy and have implemented some literacy initiatives this year. We've worked on building a culture of readers, supporting our readers through strong reading routines at school and at home. We redesigned our bookroom, added to that collection, and adopted a system for students to continuously have "Just Write Books to Read." We've also embraced reading challenges during school breaks, encouraging our kids to read and send in pictures that you've seen all over the school. Our 2nd grade team just recently hosted Camp Read-A-Lot, which was a celebration of reading on March 1st, but also engaged students in meaningful reading tasks and discussions. We hosted quarterly writers' teas to celebrate great writing in all grade levels. And we are super excited to announce we have two district winners from West Jackson this year from the Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition. It is always a fun and exciting day at West Jackson, and we're honored to share those highlights with you. And maybe next time you come next year, we'll have more animals and maybe an entire zoo. You just never know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardegry and Dr. Rogenroth and the whole team here at West Jackson Elementary School. What an engaging and exciting place to be. Makes you want to spend some time over here, doesn't it? Thank y'all very much. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Blankenship to come back to the podium. Those of you who don't always get to attend our board meetings, we're very honored to recognize folks who, she'll tell you a little bit more about it, but folks who support our schools. And these are called Excellence in Service Awards. So Dr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Dr. Howard. So this is the highlight of my month, when we get to recognize some unsung heroes in our school district. These are individuals that are nominated by staff members, community members. Anyone can nominate someone for an Excellence in Service Award. And so I would like to recognize two individuals tonight that really are exceptional people in our school district who serve our students and our community well. The first person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Melissa Nixon, who is the Family Engagement Coordinator at South Jackson Elementary School. So Ms. Nixon, if you could come forward. You can stand up here next to me while I read some great things that someone had to say about you. So Ms. Nixon's nominator chose to remain anonymous. So if you want to nominate someone, but you're a little shy about them knowing who nominated, you can always remain anonymous. But this is what her nominator had to say. "Ms. Nixon goes above and beyond to engage and serve the families of South Jackson Elementary School. If she sees a need, she immediately takes action to find and/or support those in need. For example, Ms. Nixon noticed that many of our South Jackson Elementary grandparents are raising grandchildren and needed support navigating the requirements of school in the 21st century. She created a grandparents' support group that meets regularly to discuss topics of interest. Additionally, Ms. Nixon coordinates multiple school events designed to involve South Jackson families. Her smiling face and willingness to help others brightens the day for South Jackson Elementary families and staff members. Congratulations, Ms. Nixon. You are very deserving." Next, we have Ms. Edie Archer, secretary at North Jackson Elementary School. Ms. Edie, if you will come forward, please. I want you to come up here so I can put my arm around you while I say wonderful things about you that somebody wrote. We would like to recognize a very special employee, by the way, they wanted to remain anonymous as well, who serves over and beyond her job description. In our opinion, we have the best secretary in our school system. She has been our unsung hero for 16 years. This lady wears so many hats, just to name a few. She is our secretary, receptionist, greeter, private investigator, and student spoiler. What makes her an outstanding employee that we feel needs to be recognized? This lady in the morning can answer phones, answer doors, accept medicine from parents, take care of sick students, answer parent questions, make sure they fill out a tardy slip, listen to bus radios, making sure there aren't any problems with our students, and help parents who want to register their children, sometimes all at the same time. All while being calm, cool, and collected. After bells ring, she is checking attendance, calling parents to check on students who are absent, and logging information into Infinite Campus. She does the bus schedule, makes copies for teachers, sorts mail, checks visitors in, attendance letters, and continues doing her daily duties. Most of all, she keeps us safe by identifying who can be on our campus and who cannot be here. She even knows what most parents drive. She's really the best in this. This is why we call her our own private investigator. Students will come up for her to listen to them read their first book, in which she stops and listens to them read, and then lets them know how proud she is of their accomplishment with either a song, dance, or treat. Sometimes all three. She runs our front office top-notch. Thank you so much for all you do for our North Jackson community. Edie Archer, you're the best. We love you.
Before you walk away there, Ms. Edie, tell us how many years you've worked for Jackson County Schools?
I'm not sure. I can tell you what my employee number is.
It's not 3, is it?
If anybody can beat money, you're a winner. No, my first year was in 1977.
How about that? I think that service deserves a round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Edie. Thank you, Ms. Nixon. We are so blessed. You know, we say oftentimes that the unsung heroes are the folks at the front who are the first people our parents and families get to see. So thank you, Dr. Blankenship.
That's right. So if you would like to nominate someone as an unsung hero for an Excellence in Service Award, you can go on our website and find the link to do so. And Dr. Howard, I would like to say, I think I misspelled Ms. Cotreau's name earlier. It's actually C-R-O-T-E-A-U.
Thank you, Dr. Blankenship. Again, we treasure both of those ladies and all that our front office staffs do for our schools and our communities. Very, very important. All right. We are always excited each month to be able to recognize a couple of students and a couple of teachers. And we appreciate our Rotary Clubs for sponsoring this. And I'd like to call Ms. Chanda Palmer to the front first, who's going to introduce our East Jackson Comprehensive High School students. I think she has two. I'm not sure if both of them she does. And I'm so excited they were able to be here this evening. You know, students who get recognized for these kinds of awards are very busy. And so sometimes we have to move them around. And so Ms. Palmer has two to recognize this evening because I don't believe one was available last month.
Right. And I'm so lucky to get to introduce these two. They are wonderful young ladies. So would Gracie Wilbur and Holly Stamy. Come join me at the front along with their most influential teachers. You folks get to come up too. And you'll notice that they look like twins because they're both on the golf team. And they had a match. Or they were supposed to have a match before the board meeting tonight, but it got rained out. So we're gonna start with Ms. Gracie. She was our February Rotary student. If you remember, she couldn't be here because she was, she had early acceptance to Georgia Tech and she was doing her orientation that evening. We're glad to have her today. She is actually joined tonight by her wonderful parents, Tom and Laurie Wilbur, and her sister Bailey. Bailey also looks like a triplet back there. She was on the golf team as well. And I think grandparents and cousins and just a wonderful family support system there. And they are wonderfully supportive of East Jackson High School. We just love the Wilburs. Gracie is a dual enrollment student at the University of Georgia right now. And that's a pretty amazing feat. I believe last year, the University of Georgia only had 26 students in their dual enrollment program altogether. This year, we had two at East Jackson that are there, and Gracie is one of those. Right now, she's taking courses at the University of Georgia in psychology, public speaking. She should be doing this right now. And she'll have a chance in a minute. Macroeconomics and philosophy. And then she comes back to our campus. We get to see her smiling face because she's taking AP Calculus. We get to see her smiling face because she's taking AP Calculus and AP Biology with us, so there is no break in this girl's day. She hits it all day long. She is the Beta Club President. She is also actively involved in athletics, as you can see. She is a four-year letterman in softball. She was a member of our state championship softball team. She is a four-year letterman in golf, and she's also a member of our swim team, which had its first year this year, and I think Bailey was also on that team. And in regards to honors and awards, she was the Athens Academic Athlete of the Year nominee, a Miss EJCHS candidate, a Stamps Presidential Scholarship candidate, GHP State semifinalist in science and math, and she was on the Homecoming Court this year. And she's also involved in community service, particularly with our Beta Club. She volunteers monthly at Bentley Nursing Home, and she serves twice a month in the I Serve Ministry, which is a ministry to provide food for the homeless. And she has chosen, actually, I'm going to let her tell you who she has chosen, introduce this gentleman, and tell you a little bit about her plans after high school.
Hi, everyone. I have Mr. Carl Miller with me today. He's been my math teacher for four years, and I chose him because he's really poured himself into me, and not only in a teaching way, but also just as a person. And he's given me a lot of important life skills, and I really appreciate him as a teacher and a role model in my life. And next year, I've chosen to go to Georgia Tech, and I'll be pursuing a degree in engineering. I'm not really sure what type yet, but I'd like to focus on sustainability.
And next up is Ms. Holly Stamey, and she is joined tonight by her parents, Chuck and Leanne, and sister Hannah, and some other supporters back there, I believe. And they are also wonderfully supportive of East Jackson High School. We appreciate the Stamesys. And in regards to coursework, Ms. Holly is taking Advanced Composition, Economics, Graphic Design and Production, which is our yearbook class, Mastery Mixed Chorus, which is our highest-level chorus class, and you know we have a high-level chorus at East Jackson High School, Honors Physics and Statistical Reasoning. And she is an active member of the Student Council. She was voted on by her peers to be a member of that. As I said, she's a part of Mastery Mixed Chorus, and she is one of our kiddos who was invited to sing at Carnegie Hall a couple of years ago, and then at Pearl Harbor back in December. She is also involved in the singing ministry at Free Chapel Worship Center, and a big deal for her is that she has been both the co-editor and the editor for two years of the East Jackson High School Yearbook, which is an award-winning yearbook. In addition to that, she's been a varsity cheerleader for four years and been on the golf team, as you can see. She has been a part of, like I said, that National Gallery of Excellence Award with our yearbook staff. Let's see, she is also involved in community service work, particularly with the Commerce Veterinary Clinic. And I'm going to let her take the stage and introduce her most influential teacher and tell us a little bit about her plans after high school.
Hey, I chose for my most influential teacher is Ms. Lawhorn. Not only has she been my teacher for four years, but honestly, constantly, I forget to bring her sweet teas once I get breakfast from Chick-fil-A, so I figured I would award her with this. And for yearbook and for class each day, each year, she has poured herself into me. She has not only been probably the best teacher I've had, but she's also become a lifelong friend. And for college, I plan to attend Athens Tech, where I will study the veterinary medicine
Thank you, Ms. Palmer, and congratulations to both of you outstanding ladies, Gracie and Holly. It's always humbling to hear, I don't know about you as adults, but these students blow my mind sometimes with the things that they are able to juggle and achieve, and I feel honored to be in your presence. So thank you very much for the hard work, and mom and dad, and grandparents and family friends, thanks for sharing your greatest gifts with us. I know you're very proud as well. All right, and we'll ask Dr. Jones if he will come and share with us. He's just got one, and that's an important one, so I'll turn it over to you for this month's Rotary Student at Jackson County High School.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce the Jackson County High School Rotary Student of the Month, Ms. Adriah Phillips. So if you'll come on up here, Adriah. And she selected Demine Chandler as her most influential teacher. So the little ones that you saw earlier grow up into young ladies like this. She actually went through the primary school and the intermediate school, which of course combined several years ago to the elementary school, so she is a testament to what they grew up to be. She was actually one of the very first students that I had a chance to come into contact with when I came here five years ago, because she's been around our school for many years beyond the four that she's been a student, so she may not like that. And Andrew's out there, too, so he's going to be one that'll come up to us soon, too. It is my great pleasure to recognize Adriah today, because I've had a chance to get to know her personally, and she is a wonderful young lady. She always has a smile on her face. Whenever I ask her, you know, "How's it going?", she's always like, "It's going well." And I know sometimes it can't, I mean, like, "Well, we just came in from the rain." But she's always got that smile on her face, and is such a positive influence on our school. She's taking a rigorous course load, including AP Statistics, Advanced Composition, Honors Physics. She's a member of her band, and then Mastery Band. She's taken AP Government and Politics, Honors Anatomy, and Fundamentals of Exercise Physiology. She's also heavily involved in our school in a lot of activities, including the National Honor Society, the Beta Club, Student Leadership Team, the Spanish Honor Society. She's the president of our HOSA chapter. She's also a leader in the clarinet section in our marching band, is a member of our wind ensemble, who has had a chance to play in several memorable places in the past few years, including the University of Georgia most recently. Outside of school, she's also busy. I don't know how in the world she does all of what she does, because she's heavily been heavily involved in dance for most of her life, and so that's been exciting. And I know Ms. Phillips has had a chance to tote her around all kinds of exotic places along that journey. And she also is a children's worship leader at Northeast Church, so she's a very well-rounded young lady. She has been recognized in several different ways across her scholastic career, including earning an academic letter. She's in the top 10% of her class. She's the recipient of the Georgia Certificate of Merit, the 11th Grade Healthcare Science Student of the Year, and she's also been awarded from our JCAT group at our school for all As along three years of her high school career. So she's been very balanced in her work. She's challenged herself. She's been a high achiever in our CTAE area, as well as our academic areas, and then she's been very busy in our school community as well. So I'm going to turn it over to her, so she can talk a little bit about why she selected Ms. Chandler, and tell us a little bit what she's going to be doing after high school.
I chose Ms. Chandler as my most influential teacher because she's truly there for the students. Teaching is more than just her job, it's her passion. Ms. Chandler's love for healthcare shines through each and every day. She is a true example of what I strive to be: intelligent, dependable, and driven. As I've had her for two years and worked alongside her as a HOSA officer, these traits have become evident. She has guided me, along with others, through officer training, HOSA conferences, and preparing us to pass a medical certification exam. All of these things could not have been done without her dedication to helping us succeed. Most importantly, I know that if I ever need something, she's always there to give my friends and I the best advice. Even on days that I know Ms. Chandler could be going home and doing other things, she always hangs around to listen to our long, drawn-out list of worries. I'm so thankful that I've had the opportunity to learn from her. I'm going to be attending the University of North Georgia in Delwanega to pursue a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing. After working and gaining experience, I hope to return to school to get my masters and ultimately practice as a nurse practitioner.
Thank you, Adriah, for everything you do for our school. Ms. Phillips, thank you, and Mitch, for everything that you do for the Jackson County community, and thank you, Ms. Chandler, for not only your influence on Adriah, but all the students that you have a chance to interact with every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, and congratulations, Adriah and Ms. Chandler. Ms. Chandler, I think you're one of our own as well, aren't you? Jackson County graduate there, so we love it when our graduates come back. All of you ladies hear that. There's always going to be an opportunity for you to come back and mentor, and you're a great role model for all the students in our community, so thank you very much. That's all we have. What a night of celebrations. Very proud of these students, proud of the work that's happening at West Jackson Elementary. Exceptionally grateful for the adults who invest time and energy to make sure these students have these kinds of opportunities. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Wilber.
All right, thank you. It's always a joy for us to be in the schools and get to hear about the students and all these wonderful things they're doing. It makes us all really proud, and I know you parents have got a lot to be thankful for, so we appreciate you all, too, and our staff for all that you do. All right, with our consent agenda, with items one through seven, do I have a motion that we accept? Okay, and a second? All in favor? All right, okay, and a motion to adjourn? Okay, all right. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it.